We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, March the 4th, 2024 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Howard?
Here.
Commissioner Hunt?
Here.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here. Commissioners, tonight, we have two commissioners that are joining us remotely. All votes tonight will be have to be called by roll call. If I forget item, please do not mind reminding me so that we would abide by our bylaws as Board of Commissioners. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask you, if you would, to let us stand together as our county attorney, Mr. Eric Grady, will lead us in prayer. Then I ask you to remain standing after the prayer for the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag.
O Lord, our governor is-
Glory is in all the world. We commend this nation and this county to your merciful care, that being guided by your providence, we may dwell secure in your peace. Grant to these commissioners and to all in authority wisdom and strength to know and to do your will. Fill all those in authority with the love of truth and righteousness, and make them ever mindful of their calling to serve the people. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, we welcome you tonight to the Commissioners' meeting, which is your meeting, and to those that may be viewing online, we also welcome you. I would ask that those of us in attendance here tonight would check our cell phones to make sure that they are on silence, so they wouldn't disrupt this meeting. We would appreciate it. Commissioners, you have before you your agenda packets. I would like to ask that we add a closed session to tonight's agenda. Mr. County Attorney, do you have that general statute?
General statute is going to be under 143, 31811, subsection A, the two provisions dealing with real estate and attorney-client privilege.
Okay. Commissioners, you heard the addition of a closed session. You got the general statute. I also asked Commissioners if we could pull 7C under County Attorney's report. Staff needs a little extra time to study this matter. It would be tabled until another meeting, but we would pull that from tonight's agenda. Are there other items that you desire to pull or add from tonight's agenda? Here none. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
No move. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with necessary changes. Is any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Commissioners, before we enter into tonight's agenda, I would ask for Chairman's privilege as we begin. On February the 19th, 2024, this Board of Commissioners passed a resolution recognizing all the efforts and the life of Peter Bradison. And tonight, I'm going to ask Madam Clerk, if you will, to read that resolution. After you have read that resolution, then I will turn the floor over to Commissioner Howard.
Resolution and recognition of Peter L. Bradison. Whereas Peter L. Bradison was a U.S. Marine Corps veteran of Vietnam and retired after 22 years of service, whereas Peter L. Bradison worked as a civilian at Cherry Point after his military retirement for 20 years, whereas Peter L. Bradison joined Township 6 Fire Department July 1st, 1987, and served faithfully for 37 years. Whereas as an active member of Township 6 Fire Department, Peter L. Bradison served in the capacity of Vice President, President, Assistant Chief, and Chief multiple times throughout the years. Whereas Peter L. Bradison recruited and mentored many young firefighters, sharing his knowledge and leadership skills, such that he will be deeply missed by those he served alongside at Township 6 Fire Department. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Craven County Board of Commissioners recognizes Chief Peter L. Bradison for his many years of community service and his contributions to Craven County and its citizens. Be it further resolved that the Craven County Board of Commissioners extend their heartfelt sympathies to his family adopted this 19th day of February, 2024.
Commissioner Howard?
I suppose I would honor it is for us to pass this resolution. I just want to read a few things about Pete. Pete Bradison was a true hero in every sense of the word. With 22 years of dedicated service to the Marine Corps, he served his country with honor and distinction. His commitment to duty and unwavering courage inspired all who knew him. But Pete's heroism did not end with his military service. As the chief of Township 6 Fire Department, he continued to selflessly serve his community, putting his life on the line to protect others. His leadership and professionalism were unmatched, and his impact on the department will be felt for years to come. Pete Bradison will be deeply missed by all who had the privilege of knowing him. His legacy of service, sacrifice, and selflessness will continue to inspire us all. Rest in peace, Pete. And I would like to call Margaret, his wife, up to receive this resolution and ask her if she would like to say anything. And the chief, if you're welcome to join, if you'd like.
Thank you. Would you like to share anything?
Can't do anything. Thank you.
Please. Yes, ma'am.
I'll just say one more thing. When you take over a position like this, it's an honor to be able to do something like this. I know that George was very close with this fire department, worked with Pete for many years, and it's honored to also have former Commissioner George Liner here. Would you like to say anything, George?
Good, thank you. You're so welcome.
We do thank Commissioner Howard for bringing this to the Board of Commissioners' attention, and we cannot say enough, we try to show our appreciation as a Board of Commissioners to our volunteer fire and rescue folks across this county. We say it many times, and I can't say it enough, but they volunteer their time, their talent, and their own treasure to serve their fellow citizens. They save the taxpayers of this county millions and millions of dollars every year. And as Georgia shared with me in the past, I did not know Mr. Bradison, but he shared that it was not only Pete working, but it was his wife, Ms. Margaret, also serving. And so it was a family affair, as they went forward and served the fellow man. So we thank you, and thank all those that are in attendance with you tonight. We appreciate it. Commissioners, item one tonight, we are also honored tonight to recognize some individuals who are doing some great work here in Craven County. And at this time, I'm going to invite Ms. Pam Hawkins, who is head of our Craven County Clean Sweep Committee, to come forth, and to also Ms. Pat Sager. We can't leave Ms. Pat out.
Sure.
And so we turn it over to you.
Okay, Chairman Jones, Commissioners, I want to thank you for allowing us to have a few minutes on your agenda tonight to make this special presentation. As Chairman Jones just said, I have Ms. Pat Sager here with me, but I want the rest of the committee or the people that work with the Clean Sweep Program, please stand up and just show that you are here in support of our award recipients. These are the people, just a handful of them. We have more that work to make this program the success that it is.
Good night.
Hey, on behalf of the Craven County Clean Sweep Committee, we would like to present the Super Sweeper Award to two very deserving individuals tonight. The Super Sweeper Award was established by the Clean Sweep Committee in the fall of 2023 in an effort to expand our program. This award will recognize individuals or groups that go above and beyond in helping keep Craven County clean and free of litter. The Clean Sweep Committee would like to make this an annual award event in which the recipients are recognized at the first Craven County Board of Commissioners meetings each year in March. So now we're going to get to the good part. The Clean Sweep Committee received letters from former Craven County Commissioner George Liner, former mayor of Havelock, Jimmy Sanders, and Kim Lacy of Tucker Creek, all telling us about a unique individual that goes above and beyond in helping to keep their communities clean. After reading the letters, we were all in agreement that this person deserves, at the least, to be recognized here tonight. Here are a few things that we learned about him. He spends countless hours walking the streets and highways in Tucker Creek and the Havelock area, picking up other people's trash that they have so carelessly thrown out. This includes during the scorching heat of the summer, the blustery cold days of winter, and even during rainstorms. He has also been spotted on Highway 70 in New Bern picking up trash. He does it all with a smile on his face, and has even had people stop along the way and thank him for what he is doing, and sometimes they even offer him water and snacks. He has kept a record since 2009 of the number of bags he picks up, and if things keep going as they have been, he is on his way to having more than 10,000 bags of trash picked up by the end of 2024. What's so special about this person is that he does this on his own, without any prodding from anyone. He does it for the sole purpose of trying to keep his community clean and free of litter. It is our great pleasure to recognize Mr. Joe Meadows as a Super Sweeper in Craven County. Our next recipient has been instrumental in the success of our Clean Sweep program as it is today. Since 2002, shortly after becoming the Craven County Extension Director, this individual put in countless hours serving on the committee, facilitating sweep events, and assisting with increasing the publicity of the program. He was involved in the establishment of additional sweep events, bringing the count to four events per year. He has spent hours of his personal time picking up trash and litter in and around the Croatan National Forest, which is one of his favorite places to be. His leadership over the years and his encouragement to committee members to keep moving forward has most certainly contributed to the growth of our Clean Sweep program here in Craven County. And although he has retired now from his day job, we know that he will always be a strong proponent of the Clean Sweep program, and if we needed to call on him for advice or support, he would be there for us. Therefore, it is our great pleasure again to recognize Mr. Tom Glasgow as a Super Sweeper in Craven County.
We're going to invite you, if you will, to come forward, and y'all can take some pictures. And Commissioner, any of the Commissioners that, I think Commissioner Hunt wanted to join, any Commissioners that wanted to join? I'll be there. Mr. Meadows, Mr. Glasgow, thank you so much for what you do, and to all of our volunteers here, we can't thank you enough for taking the time to keep this county clean. We're going to take about a two or three-minute recess to allow those that may want to leave that opportunity. Order. Item two is petition of citizens for agenda topics. Vice Chair, do we-
There are none for agenda topics.
Okay, we have none for agenda topics, all right? We will move to item three is the consent agenda. You have the minutes of the February 19th, 2024 regular session, you have tax releases and refunds, and then the military service person of the quarter resolution. Are there any consent agenda items you desire to pull? Here none. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, departmental matters. Item four is CARTs. We'll ask Ms. Kelly Walker-Kinter, if she will, to come forward. Good evening.
Hey, good evening. The Federal Transit Administration requires transit agencies to have a safety management system packaged in a public transportation agency safety plan document. This document is required to be updated annually. North Carolina Department of Transportation has hired a company to ensure that transit system plans meet the FTA requirements. With that guidance, general updates have been made, such as safety performance data information and changes by the reviewing company to update and insert language, all to bring the plan current to the FTA requirements. A copy of the proposed plan has been provided, and we are requesting approval of the updated plan.
Okay, Commissioners, you have any questions?
I do not.
You have, Commissioner Hunt?
No, I don't.
Okay, okay. All right, here no questions. Do we have a motion to approve the CARTs Public Transportation Agency Safety Plan?
Move to approve the plan.
Okay, we have a motion and I have a second, and any discussion on the motion? Here no discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, item five is Finance. Mr. Craig Warren.
Good evening, sir. Good evening. Okay, I've got one item on the agenda for you tonight, and that is the annual audit contract. The accounting firm Thompson Price Scott Adams &amp; Company, PA, has submitted a proposal to perform the county's annual audit for the current fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024. The proposed fee is not to exceed $78,500, which is an increase of $2,150, or 2.8% of our last year. This fee includes both the Coastal Carolina Regional Airport and the Craven County Tourism Development Authority. Both the airport and TDA will be billed for their portion of the fee. Staff recommends the county continue to contract with the firm Thompson Price Scott Adams Company, PA, for the performance of the county's annual audit for fiscal year 2024.
Okay, Commissioners, you have any questions for Mr. Warren?
Just one, is this the accounting firm that we tend to use every year?
Yes, sir.
Just is there any advantage to, and this is just a question for citizens, is there any advantage to moving to different firms occasionally just to get a different look?
Every so often, there is an advantage when the price to perform the audit starts to get to a level that's beyond what we would expect for that type for our county size. Plus, it's not a bad idea to switch them out every five to 10 years or so.
Okay.
If the board desires so. But I would caution that at this point in time, there are very few auditors in the state. So if we were to not go with this group, we would have to go out for proposals and see what we get back.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Chair Booker?
How many years have they done our audit, Craig?
This is the fourth year of this particular firm.
This coming up will be the fourth?
Yes, sir.
So we're probably good with them for another year after this?
The firm that we were with before, we were with for 20 years. So we kind of have some perspective.
Any additional questions? All right, here none. Do we have a motion to approve the audit contract with Thompson Price Scott Adams &amp; Company, PA?
Make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right. Commissioners, item six is appointments. You have pending, current, and upcoming terms expiring. First item would be pending. Does any Commissioners have any nominations for any pending? All right, here none for pending. We will now go to current. The first one is the Board of Equalization and Review. This is for District 6, Commissioner Howard's district. You have the applicant of Michael Thompson, who seeks appointment. Commissioner Howard?
I ask him to apply, and I recommend him.
Okay, we have the nomination of Mr. Thompson. Are there additional nominations from the floor? Here no additional nominations. We will accept by acclamation. Next would be the Emergency Medical Services. We both seek reappointment. You have the first of Tony Fisher, who is, I reckon, Madam Clerk, is this the Havelock EMS representative?
I believe that's right. I'm pulling it up real quick.
And then Bill Smith, who would represent the Friendly Medical Transport, and that is our-
Non-emergency.
Non-emergency, okay. And they are specified seats, okay?
I would recommend appointment of Tony Fisher and Bill Smith, both.
Okay, we have the nomination of Mr. Fisher and Mr. Smith. Are there any additional nominations from the floor? All right, here none. We will accept by acclamation. Next would be the Fireman's Relief Fund Board of Trustees is Tri-City. We have the applicant of David Warren, who seeks appointment to fill Keith Gaskin's seat. Commissioner Mark, this is your appointment of Keith Gaskins. What's your desire?
Let's reappoint him. Let's appoint him.
Okay, we got the nomination of Mr. Gaskins, yes.
Okay.
I meant Mr. Warren.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I misspoke.
Yes.
But Commissioner Mark, just for clarification, I made a mistake. Mr. Warren is seeking to fill the seat that was held by Mr. Gaskins.
That is correct.
Okay, I'm sorry for that. All right, we have that nomination of Mr. Warren. Are there additional nominations from the floor? Here none. We will accept by acclamation. All right, Commissioners, you see the upcoming terms expiring. Please take note of that. Are there any additional appointments to be made tonight? All right, here none. We will now go to County Attorney's Report. Mr. Grady.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I have several items for your consideration this evening. Item number three has been pulled from the agenda for consideration at a later date. The first item is the approval of the sale of surplus property owned by the county and the city. The property is owned or located at 801 Queen Street, and it has a parcel ID number of This is the approval after the expiration of the upset bid, so it is the final approval. The bid amount is $3,750. The original taxes and cost of foreclosure were $2,949.34, and the tax value of the property is $7,500. I suggest that you consider giving final approval to this one.
All right, Commissioners, what's your desire?
I make a motion we approve the purchase.
Okay, we had the motion to adopt the resolution approving conveyance after the expiration of said bid process. Here no additional discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right. Okay, the third item, again, it is numbered item number four in your agenda packet. This is an initial offer for property located at 515 First Avenue with a parcel ID number of 8-012-A-224. We do own this jointly with the city of New Bern, which has already given its initial approval. The offer amount is $2,800. The past due taxes and the cost of the foreclosure together were $4,031.25, and the tax value of the property is $5,400. I suggest that the board consider giving your initial approval to this one. We'll put it through the upset bid process and have it back before the board at a later date. All right, Commissioners, what's your desire?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution approving transaction and authorizing the upset bid process. Is any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right. And the last one.
The final one is another initial offer for property that the county owns jointly with the city of New Bern. The property is located at 1017 Main Street with a parcel ID number of 8007094. The city has given its initial approval. The bid amount is $3,000. The past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure together were $6,565.85, and the tax value of the property is $5,400. I recommend that the board consider giving initial approval to this, and after the upset bid process, we'll have it back before you for final approval at a later date.
Okay. Commissioners, what's your desire?
I make a motion to authorize upset bid process.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution approving transaction and authorizing the upset bid process. Is any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, and the last one.
The final one is another initial offer for property that the county owns jointly with the city of New Bern. The property is located at 1017 Main Street with a parcel ID number of 8007094. The city has given its initial approval. The bid amount is $3,000. The past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure together were $6,565.85, and the tax value of the property is $5,400. I recommend that the board consider giving initial approval to this, and after the upset bid process, we'll have it back before you for final approval at a later date.
Okay. Commissioners, what's your desire?
I make a motion to authorize upset bid process.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution approving transaction authorizing the upset bid process. Is any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right.
Thank you. The second item is also a final approval, again, for property that we own jointly with the city of New Bern, located at 512 Second Avenue, with a parcel ID number of 8-012-A-230. The final bid amount is $2,700. The original past due taxes and cost of foreclosure together were $4,129.85, and the tax value of the property is $5,400. The city has already given its approval, final approval, and I would suggest that the board consider doing likewise.
All right, Commissioners, what's your desire?
I move that we approve the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
All right, second for Commissioner Smith. Any discussion on the motion? And the motion is to adopt the resolution approving conveyance after the expiration of said bid process. Here no additional discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right. bid process, we'll have it back before you for final approval at a later date.
Okay, Commissioners, what's your desire?
I make a motion to authorize upset bid process.
Okay, we have a motion, have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution, approving transaction, authorizing the upset bid process. Is any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the robe.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Question before you leave, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you speak to 1010 Green Street?
No, ma'am, that was...
That's good, okay.
Yeah, it was pulled from the agenda. We've, and when the offer came across our collective desk, we've had some questions about it and some investigation and research to do, so we expect to have it back before the Board, most likely at the next meeting, and we'll fully brief the Board at that time, if that's okay. Yes, ma'am.
I just didn't want it to flip past.
No, ma'am, I'm gonna keep it right at the top of the stack.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Right, next we have Petition of Citizens for General Topics. Vice Chair Booker?
Yeah, we have two. The first one is from, I'm gonna give this a try. Anaya Avraham. How bad was that?
It's common. I hear it a lot.
We welcome you tonight. We do have three minutes.
Okay.
That is up, and if you will, just give your name and your address, we will for the record.
You said address?
If you don't mind.
Okay. My name is Anaya Avraham. My address is 531 West Thurman Road, New Bern, North Carolina. Greetings, Chairman Jones and fellow Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Anaya Avraham, but my professional stage name is Anaya Simone, and I am the founder of Dazzling Dancers, Inc., which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that was founded in 2019, and this is a dance team that's for boys, girls, and teenagers, and also families that help teach about culture, helps teach about structure, and using your creativity in dancing. We have had over 100 dancers within the five years we've been established, and also have done over 120 performances throughout Eastern, North, without, throughout Eastern, North Carolina. Our goal is to extend our reach in the community, our audience year-round, helping low-income families who cannot afford $50 a month for dues. Providing this year-round service will help teach about celebrating each other, culture, and learning each other. Our current programs that we have at the time, we do have practice every Wednesday and Thursday at 6:30 p.m. to 8 o'clock p.m. at the Pembroke Community Center, and this establishment makes it easier for our dancers and families to get to. So we start off practice with a drum circle, which is new that we just added. We got great donations of drums to our organization, and the drum circles help the drummers and the dancers build a drummer-dancer relationship, connecting with each other through music, creating music, and also empowers the drummer and the dancer. We also have some events going on this year that are free. Our first one will be our Second Annual Caribbean Carnival Pageant Festival, and we also have the Dazzling Dancers and Pembroke Community Fall Festival and our five-year reunion. These events are free to the community, but we also do performances outside of our events. We will be doing a performance for the New Bern Civic Theater April 20th, where we will be joining our families and with the kids, calling it a fam mob instead of a flash mob, so our families could get involved with their children and build on family relationships. So our year, we, this year, we are aiming to find sponsors to help us with expenses for our dancers. The categories of the expenses are costumes, food, and essentials. If you could be by our side, Commissioners, City, it will help us achieve our goals in serving the community and giving back to the community. I also have listed the detailed information about how to get in contact, and also provided flyers of our Second Annual Caribbean Carnival Pageant. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our second speaker would be Mr. Glenn Fink.
Good evening, I'm Glenn Fink, 646 Goose Creek Road. Both these topics may not have direct implications, but I really feel like you have a partnership in these things. The first is social workers, and my concern is the expansion of social services that's being provided through our Craven County school system, which I know is not your responsibility. They currently have five social worker positions, and the role of the assistant principals, guiding counselor, interventionist, tutors, all those official roles, to me, should be to document the facts of the case that meets the criteria to go to a social service worker or need, and to me, that should be referred to the county where the skills and capabilities exist, rather than to bolt that onto an already stressed system. My concern is coordination with the county on those services, because they'll be serving the same group of people, and I would just say, given the climate, performance of public schools in general, and their scope should be limited to what they should be doing, rather expanding. Reading, writing, and arithmetic and those things should be their focus, and not bringing more things in-house that makes it more challenging to meet all the needs. So I will clearly be having similar requests and thoughts shared with the school system, but I don't see it anything different than the resource officers. That's a special skill the county's providing. I know it's onsite, this may be onsite or not, but I just see it as something that should be evaluated, and I know you have a partnership with the school board members, and I hope this can be a discussion that comes up to maximize it. I'm not questioning the need, I'm questioning how it gets accomplished. And the next topic, I attended a conference this weekend. It was a local church. It was on transgender. It's a biblical understanding of sex, and the focus was on the T part of the alphabet group name. What struck me and why I'm here is Chloe Cole, 19-year-old woman, she provided her testimony in detail. She was socially awkward and didn't fit in during middle school. She stated social media played a significant role in her decision to transition. Her parents were not allowed to be involved in the counseling. The medical community didn't try to help her with the confusion she was experiencing. The professionals communicated to her parents, she had two choices. One is to affirm her gender choice and gain a son, or two, lose her through, lose your daughter through suicide. And she said she was never suicidal. Anyway, there is a point in there for policy evaluation.
All right, thank you. All right, is that all, Mr. Vice Chair?
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you to those that spoke to the Board this evening.
All right, item nine is County Manager's Report.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity. To begin with, just a couple calendar reminders. March 18th, which will be two weeks from today, we're gonna have a County Strategic Work Session. This is one we do every year. It will start after our normal morning meeting on the 18th. I do suspect it will be rather lengthy. Topics to be discussed will be land use, planning, county budget, capital projects update, and DOT update. There's all kinds of stuff that day. So it's a very informative session. I do plan right now for you to be here after lunch, so probably 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock that afternoon before we're finished. So thank you for that, and we'll notice all that to the public and make sure everyone's aware. Just as a reminder, it's a unique opportunity. Tomorrow, March 5th, is Election Day. It's our civic duty and our civic right to do that, but I'm here tonight mainly to thank the election staff, which has already worked for several weeks before Election Day. Quite frankly, I don't know how they do it, but I'm so proud of Susan, and Leon, and Steve, and the whole team downstairs, and the hard work they put forth, and it's gonna be a long day for them tomorrow. But again, it's an important day, and they take their job very seriously, and I'm very thankful to have all of them here. A couple notes coming up. Next week, the county staff, particularly the management team, will begin the annual process of reviewing the budgets that have been submitted by the different departments and divisions within county government. It's a really exciting time for us. It's tedious. I don't know if anyone noticed tonight, but you can see how serious Craig was taking it. He bought himself a new pair of glasses, so you don't want to miss anything this year. Sorry, Craig, I had the opportunity. But anyway, it's an important time, so next week, we will be in this room most of the week doing that work. If you need us, just give us a shout, but we won't be in our normal positions. Lastly, I saw David here. Hope he's still here. I wanted to recognize the Sheriff's Office, and kind of a PSA on, unfortunately, most of our Clean Sweep folks left, but last week, we received a series of pictures of a huge amount of trash that had been disposed of illegally on the side of a road. Guess what popped out of the top? An envelope with the person's address and name on it, and we passed that information along to our Craven County Sheriff's Office, and they went out, and as last I heard from the sheriff, there were charges pressed against those individuals. But it's, it's great what Clean Sweep does. They can't do it alone, though. It takes being a good citizen, doing the right thing with your trash, and if you're gonna illegally dump, certainly don't put an envelope with your name on the top. And then lastly, it's kind of my, one of the things I think we could all do a better job of, and I got an email last week, and it's made me think about the idea of how civics enters a young person's life. And when I was young, albeit it's been a while now, there was a civics course, and you learned about local government and what we do. There is a problem in local government. I think Amber said it best last week, is that simply enough people aren't choosing this as an option for their career. And we heard folks talk about fire. We've heard people talk about solid waste. We've talked about law enforcement. We've talked about social workers. I see our librarian back there. We have all these fantastic positions in county government and city government. I'll give my friends across the street a plug, and it makes a great career, and it's rewarding because you get to serve your friends, your family, your neighbors, the community that you live in. I can't think of a more awesome thing, but I'm in it, so. But there was a, there was a book for young folks that the National Association of Counties came out with. It's called The Marvelous Adventures of County Land, and it's a book that's intended for folks like our young one who stepped out, but to begin to learn about what county commissioners do, what county managers do, what county planners do, and I think it's such an important piece of our educational process. So for the record, The Marvelous Adventures of County Land, and there was a really eloquent statement about county attorneys area I read, so you'll have to read that, yeah. Something about long hours and lots of paper, but anyway, I just point that out. Mr. Chairman, that's, that's all my comments for tonight.
All right, any questions for the county manager?
I did. Mr. Vice, I would appreciate it if you would speak for a moment on the Dicks Crisis Center, speak to the conversation that we spoke to last week.
Yes, ma'am.
There are some concerns there that we might want to share with the Commissioners and the public, if you will.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Appreciate the reminder on that. So last week, Commissioner Smith and I were notified via letter correspondence that Carteret County is intending to no longer participate in the Dicks Center after June 30th, 2024. So as we've had discussions, Commissioner Smith briefed the Board, I briefed the Board. We already knew there were some challenges going in. This will be, you know, to put in perspective, a $300,000 gap if they pull their funding, which they've indicated they will. There are other options, as the Board instructed me, you know, one of the things I heard loud and clear was that we don't want no option, so there has to be an option. What's the best fit? How do we work that? There are other facilities like this that exist. There is a new facility we're gonna find out more about later this week in another county that seems to meet some of the criteria, but there's nothing in Craven County. I think Commissioner Smith made that point. Maybe that's an avenue we need to explore as well. So for the record, I've spoken with the Onslow County Manager late last week. They're still trying to piece together what this means. They do own the facility. I'll report back as I get more information on that. Did I cover everything, Commissioner Smith?
On that subject, Jack, is that center, and I know we've been contributing for, what, three years, something like that?
Been contributing since 2019.
Five years. Is the state involved in that funding, or is it strictly local funding?
So there's two, two ways to fund it, and I hope I don't butcher this too bad. So there's the coverage of the services a person receives while they're in the facility. That's covered through Trillium and some of the Medicaid dollars and state dollars that flow through Trillium. The idea of keeping the lights on, providing food, nutrition, and the things that an individual needs while they're there is up to the counties, and that is Carteret, Craven, Onslow, and the City of Jacksonville.
Thank you, sir.
I say just one of the, for the sake of people that may not know what the Dicks Crisis Center is about, will you share that with them?
Yes, so the Dicks Crisis Center is a, really a short-term detox, for the better word. It's a facility where if someone's abusing drugs or in mental health crisis, they go there to become stabilized. It is in a setting where there's lots of different services that are provided, and I hope, Commissioner Smith, was once you get through that, you go to a long-term recovery program. This is the preparatory step to get to long-term recovery.
All right, Commissioner Howard?
So my question is if a Carteret County citizen now goes to the Dicks Center, is their food and all those things still covered if they pull the money?
Well, so they're, they're gonna, they're gonna remain, continue as part of a member until June 30th, 2024. I suspect all those questions of how it'll work once they leave will have to be worked out between now and then, pretty quickly, would be my guess.
Okay, additional questions?
We did, and for the record, I don't, just, last month, our numbers did increase. I believe we were at 15 individuals and roughly 13% of the bed space in the facility, so.
I just asked the question because I suspect that other counties will end up paying for that.
Well, they don't, and again, one of the challenges as being a funder of the system is they can't turn anybody away. So no matter if you came from Kalamazoo, Michigan County, you're still gonna be served just like you came from Craven, Onslow, or Carteret. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item is Commissioners' Reports. Before we turn it over to Commissioners for your reports, I do want to recognize, we have with us Ms. Kat Clowers, our Regional Director for Craven, Pamico Regional Library. Ms. Kat, thank you for being here. Appreciate all you do. And also, Ms. Summer Peay, well, I know her as Summer Bajort, but anyway, she's now married, but she is our Education and Outreach Coordinator for the, for Summer.
You can just say the land.
The land fever, folks. And so, she's doing a good job out there. Appreciate you being here. All right, who'd like to begin tonight?
I said question, Summer, are you Joan York?
Yes.
Your mother? Okay, I thought so. Nice to meet you. I've heard, I've heard good things.
Since you're speaking, how about you start us out, Commissioner?
You probably don't want that, but I'm just going to go over my report from, half my report from the Legislative Conference, and I'll make it brief. The notes, there's a lot more notes with Nan, I think Nan?
Yes.
Yeah, that someone who wants to look over them can. First meeting I attended was Cultivating Arts Economy, a Blueprint for Local Job Creation, and of the two pages here, the thing that I got from that was, one thing that surprised me was the amount of jobs created by arts when, when county and government municipalities invest in art. That surprised me, and the amount of income generated from that. So it was two very large national studies released several years back, kind of confirmed that. Second meeting, IT Standing Committee meeting, and I won't go over a lot of that. A lot of that was very technical, and just general suggestions for counties from, some examples from different counties and stuff like that. Interesting, but technical. Next, something that was very interesting to me was the Transformative Power of Artificial Intelligence Summit, and the reason I really enjoyed that is we had experts in the professional from Microsoft, from the White House, from the NSA, talking about AI. And one of the conclusions I got from, and most of these, obviously, generally, these people are from whatever administration's in power in Washington, so they were Biden officials, or they worked with Biden's administration. So one of the big, key things I got from that is that mostly they find AI, particularly generative AI, which I define some of the terms here. Generative AI is that I could take an image of, let's just say Glenn Fink speaking, and I could make Glenn say the things I wanted him to say, and through artificial intelligence. And obviously, that was very concerning to a lot of the speakers up there. Government, obviously, the government, the Biden administration wants to clamp down on AI, I think, to some degree, pull back. I don't know that you can, that's even possible to do. Kind of pull back the hands of time there and put some handcuffs on AI and kind of restrict that. I just don't see that happening, particularly with the AI race with all the, you know, with China, Russia, the Middle East. I think it's, I don't think that's ever going to happen. But very interesting discussion, anyway. Industry insights from Microsoft, from a company called Salesforce that operates with governments around the country. Next, earmarks are back. A few years ago, we got rid of earmarks in, at the congressional senate level. The senate doesn't like to talk about it. Congress doesn't like to talk about it. And if you call it earmarks, you'll get your hand slapped. They don't do earmarks. It's community grants. So community grants are back. I think the, every congressman has up to 14. I think 80% of Republicans are participating in the process now, and maybe 100% Democrats. 14 per congressman, and our senators have a kind of an unlimited, in theory, for the community grants, though they call it something different. And I will, I won't take any more of your time on that. I did attend the Republican Caucus while there, while there, and a Trump appointee spoke, and that was very interesting. A lot of these conferences, particularly the Legislative Conference with NACO, are generally driven by the other party, not to be partisan. The point of our caucus was to get more Republican involvement at the national level with NACO. I will say that we did have a precinct committee meeting, and the sheriff spoke. So, and a lot of the issues that we've, he's talked about here. He talked about our precinct for maybe an hour to 90 minutes. And I will echo what Jack said earlier, get out and vote. It's our civic responsibility, and that's tomorrow. I'll, I'll take most of the day off, like I usually do, and work the polls or call people, reminding them to get, reminding them to get out and vote and stuff like that. And just on your thought on civics, we just got back. As you know, I spent 36 hours of my weekend with 34 middle school students. We first went to the senate and talked to Senator Sanderson. He actually got all those kids in his office, and I have a picture to prove it. He said that this is literally the most students I've ever had, most people I've ever had in this office. So that was interesting. He was very engaging with the kids. It was productive. Then when one of, a staffer came, his name was Juan. He showed, he gave us a quick tour, very informative, very informational. We got, the kids actually got to stand on the floor there, you know, where our, where our state representatives stand and debate issues, which was really cool. Following that, we went to, we did some other things, but that was the civic engagement part of it. So you ever want to be tired the next week, spend 36 hours with 34 kids running a while, running around a metropolitan area. So it's good, informative, good, and the kids loved it. I think it was a good experience. So that, that's it, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell?
No, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Mark?
No comment.
Okay. Commissioner Hunt?
I have also been busy the last couple weeks. I attended Congressman Murphy's Veterans History Project. Very, very informative. I did not have any intention of participating in that, but now that I understand what it is and why it's important, I do plan on participating, and I would like to share that with any veteran that has any questions about it. I also attended Eastern Carolina Aviation Heritage Foundation Gala. The fun event reminded me how lucky that Craven County students are to have this organization here. They work with the City of Havelock, and they put on multiple STEM events throughout the year and multiple STEM summer programs for our children. Our children have the opportunity to learn and to grow and to experience things that other children across this country and across the state of North Carolina do not have available. If you don't know what they're doing, if you don't know what their opportunities are, please go to the Eastern Carolina Aviation Heritage Foundation and look at these summer programs. And it's not just through the summer either. Just a great organization doing phenomenal things for our kids. I also attended a suicide prevention class in Havelock. It was put on, presented by Trillium Health Resources. Our country is, is experiencing a national crisis, health, mental health crisis. I would ask you two questions. The first question I would ask is, if you were in a room with someone experiencing a mental health crisis, would you recognize that? If you didn't recognize it because you don't have that skill set, if someone said to you flat out, "I'm going to kill myself." My second question would be, how would you respond? Do you know what you would do? So like we take CPR classes and like we learn how to do the Heimlich maneuver, I highly recommend that you attend these classes. I've already invited them back. They're coming back in May. And I'm going to continue to invite them back to Craven County. And my final note for today is, if you haven't voted, please go vote tomorrow.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Nothing. Thank you.
Vice Chair Booker?
Yeah, just one thing. Several of us attended a exciting announcement at the airport last week. I guess it was last week. I lose track of the days, but it was within the last 10 days, where we threw a lot of hard work by a bunch of people. Jeff Wood from our county Economic Development Department, leading the way along with Andy, our airport manager, Melissa from, what's her?
TDA.
Yeah, TDA. Thank you. TDA, Tourism Development Group. They've been working for months and months and months trying to secure a second airline to come into our county, and it's been, it's been tough going. We're probably a marginal market because of the size of our market. Major airlines aren't really expanding right now. If anything, they're contracting. So they've worked hard, and they announced, obviously, you probably all know already, that Breeze Airlines will begin service here in May with flights to Hartford, Connecticut, and to Orlando. And they hope to expand beyond that. They hope if, if this is a successful, they expand, they hope to expand to other markets, which is very exciting because right now, we're at the mercy of American Airlines, being our only carrier. So it's great news. They've been working hard behind the scenes trying to convince an airline to come here. Our Craven 100 Alliance, which is our Economic Development Arm, public-private group, was also very involved in this. So Chairman sits on the board of the airport. You may want to expand on what I said, but all in all, great news for the county.
That's it. Thank you, sir. It is great news. Commissioner Smith?
Address the cost of those flights.
Well, I think they start at $49. But there, I did, I did book a flight on the first flight out to Connecticut. There are a couple of add-ons that if you, if you go on with anything other than just your body and your purse, there are, there are some other charges. But it's very, very inexpensive by comparison with what we're paying today through American. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, commissioners. Anything else to bring before the board tonight?
I will add to Danny. I had a friend book Orlando, and they did the nice, nicer and nicest. They did the nicest. And even at the first-class level, they saved a few hundred dollars by booking with this Breeze airline. I mean, it's an amazing, they were showing me the images of chairs and everything. It's an amazing deal, even at first class.
I would also add that going to Connecticut, a lot of people, excuse me, a lot of people have said, "Why Hartford? Why, who wants to go to Hartford?" I will tell you that I lived about 10 miles from that airport for a number of years. And that is a huge airport that basically serves New England. It doesn't just serve Hartford. It serves Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Vermont, New Hampshire, Albany, New York. All those areas are within a couple of hours of that airport. So it's a busy, busy place, and I think it'll be a very successful destination.
All right. Staff, do you have anything further for us, other than our closed session? All right. At this time, Mr. County Manager, if you will read us that General Statute again for our closed session.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, it's NC General Statute 143, 318.11, subsection A, provision 3, for attorney-client privilege, and item number 5 for the consideration of a potential real estate acquisition.
All right. Commissioners, you heard the General Statute. You go into closed session. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion and a second to go in closed session. It is a discussion on the motion. And Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? Commissioner Mitchell?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones? Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here this evening. We're going to take about a 10-minute recess so they can get the room in order, and then we'll come back, commissioners, for our closed session.